Moving on to the next item, we're pleased to be able to bring forward a report related to our Destination 2025 Strategic Plan. This is a presentation that includes survey result updates from prior years, as well as our New Year's survey, as well as superintendent advisory committees. Turn it over to Mrs. Coy.
Wonderful. Well, good afternoon, everybody. Madam Chair, Dr. Cashwell, and members of the board. As you know, HCPS gathers feedback from students, staff, school leaders, and families in a variety of different ways throughout the school year. This afternoon, we'll share a report about the work of five of our superintendent advisory committees, relay a little bit about how we use the 2022 Annual HCPS Survey to improve services for our students and our staff, and then share the preliminary results and highlights from the 2023 HCPS Stakeholder Survey. And throughout this presentation, you'll hear how we strive to listen and learn from our advisory committee members and use the survey data intentionally to help implement our strategic plan, Destination 2025. So there are currently 11 operating superintendent advisory committees, which are established in policy. Today, we're going to provide an update on five of those listed in blue on the slide. Through these, many of our school leaders, staff, students, and families provide feedback in an ongoing manner throughout the year. We are immensely grateful for the individuals who serve on these committees and give of their time and their insight, which is invaluable to the superintendent, division leadership, and other school leaders. First up is our principal advisory committee. There are five elementary, three middle, and three high school principals that serve on this entity. The group meets monthly to receive updates from the division leadership team and then provide feedback on timely topics, raise questions, issues, and concerns from their buildings and from their colleagues. This year, the topics of discussion ranged from school quality to data collection, to school safety, staff shortages, and student and staff mental health. The feedback received had direct impact in many areas across our organization, from informing our Opportunity School Initiative, our school quality improvement processes, and our new safety recommendations and initiatives. Those are common themes you'll hear throughout these advisory committee conversations. Our teacher advisory committees, also affectionately known as TAC, split into elementary and secondary. This year, the committees met both separately and together at different points, and they provide opportunities for teachers from every single school in the division to regularly convene with colleagues and discuss pertinent topics and core issues with HCPS staff and leaders. Our elementary teachers covered a variety of topics throughout the year, many of which informed ongoing or new professional learning opportunities for elementary school staff, including topics related to classroom management and restorative practices training. Our teachers also shared safety and staffing concerns, which informed the division-wide approaches with permanent substitutes, some revisions that we've brought forward to you in the Student Code of Conduct, and safety recommendations related to SOs in our elementary schools. Similarly, our secondary TAC included representatives from all of our middle and high schools. The Secondary Teacher Advisory Committee covered many of those same topics and themes over the course of the year. I would like to highlight that one of the most direct outcomes from these conversations was the hiring of a secondary school counseling specialist to support some of the needs that we heard loud and clear from them. The Student Advisory Committee is an inspiring group of young leaders from across the division, some of whom you've probably had the pleasure of meeting. Some of these students have even served multiple terms on the committee, and all of them have done a really incredible job of raising their voices and the voices of their peers to ensure that the leaders around them understand their perspective on everything from day-to-day safety to how the Henrico learner profile actually plays out in their classrooms on a regular basis. This year, our students weighed in on topics such as social-emotional learning, the Student Code of Conduct, family and community engagement, and their lived experience with the HLP that I just mentioned. Their feedback has informed of recommendations that we've brought to you, again, on the Code of Conduct, our SEL work, and efforts to emphasize community building and belonging in our high schools. Additionally, we have our Support Staff Advisory Committee that is comprised of individuals from across our organization and central buildings. They are a small but effective group that represent a number of different employee groups across central office. On a monthly basis, they gather with Dr. Cashwell to share concerns related to facilities, IT, calendars. Their discussions even led to the creation of a new spirit committee to reinvigorate that sense of belonging and community amongst the central teams. And finally, we'd like to share the members and the work of the Family and Community Engagement Advisory Committee. Throughout the year, the FACE Advisory Committee has sought to support and expand the impact of programs that empower all our stakeholders to have voice in our system. They're continuing the efforts of the LAY Advisory by focusing on some big issues of broad interest. This year, their topics included HCPS communication, multilingual learners, student perspectives, and various funding opportunities. As we head into another year with this group, we'll focus on increasing awareness about the committee, as well as recruiting some additional members. And at this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Scott Thorpe, Director of Elementary Education. Scott's going to share some of the ways our schools have taken information received from the 2022 HCPS Stakeholder Survey that was conducted last March, and how they used it to improve the experience of our students, staff, and families throughout the 2022-2023 school year. Scott, it's all yours.
Good afternoon, and thanks so much, Mrs. Coy. In the Department of School Leadership and in our schools, we utilize trends with the survey results to inform next steps, to address opportunities, and to strengthen practices that impact our surveyed stakeholder groups of students, staff, and families. Among our data trends from the 2022 School Climate Surveys, strengths included our elementary students and families found that adults care about students. And additionally, that same group, elementary families and students, found that staff treat students with respect. And additionally, elementary and secondary school families had felt that parents feel like active participants in the school. Additionally, there were trends of opportunities that came from the 2022 surveys, including, across all stakeholder groups in elementary and secondary, bullying and responding to bullying. At the elementary level, being informed about career readiness, relevant professional development at the elementary level, and that was coming from elementary staff, and elementary and secondary stakeholders with deeper learning, connected and being connected and community-supported. Among the ways that we responded to these opportunities include the 2022 and 2023 Code of, Student Code of Conduct clearly outlined bullying definitions and actions. Additionally, each school received formal training in restorative practices this past school year. Additional professional learning offerings were made available to teachers during the past school year. Additional professional development days were added to the 2023-2024 calendar, and there's been expanded work to broaden and communicate deeper personalized learning. And at the elementary level, one way that that shows up is through student-led conferences. Dr. Hinton will now provide us with an update on the 2023 survey outcomes. Dr. Hinton?
Thank you, Scott. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Next, we will provide an overview on the 2020-2023 HCPS survey results. Annually, we administer surveys to students, families, and staff to measure the progress of our strategic goals. The surveys are designed around the four cornerstones of safety and wellness, academic progress, equity and opportunity, and relationships. We continue to partner with Metropolitan Educational Research Consortium in the School of Education at Virginia Commonwealth University in this effort. They work with us to annually review and update survey items, specifically aligned with our strategic plan drivers, and administer and analyze the survey results. Surveys were available online in March through April to students, families, and staff. New this year, an abbreviated version of the survey was given to students in grades 3 through 4, specifically with a focus on questions related to social and emotional supports, in addition to the full survey given to grades 5 through 12. The family survey was available online in English and Spanish. Paper versions of the survey were also available in six languages, including English, Spanish, Arabic, Portuguese, Dari, and Vietnamese upon request. The surveys were communicated through a variety of platforms, including the HCPS website, social media, principal weekly communications to families, paper flyers, and the Binder E newsletter. We also set up a booth at the Countywide Henrico 21 Event to encourage participation and provide an opportunity to complete the survey at that event. In total, 40,185 stakeholders participated in the survey, which is 8,366 more than in 2022, primarily due to the additional grades added to the student survey. Response rates were 68% for staff and 16% for families, which is higher than the last three years. Additionally, the student response rate returned to pre-COVID levels at 76%. In an effort to increase survey participation among families, we offered opportunities for family and school incentives. Family members who completed the survey and wanted to be entered into a prize drawing could complete a brief prize entry form at the end of the survey. We were able to randomly select one family from each Magisterial District to win a prize bag donated by the HCPS Department of Family and Community Engagement. Additionally, the Henrico Education Foundation generously donated $500 in professional development funds to the school in each Magisterial District with the highest family survey response rate. School winners were recognized at the Division's June Leadership Meeting. Congratulations to the faculties at Shore Pump Elementary, Wilder Middle School, Gaton Elementary, Springfield Park Elementary, and Elgo Middle Schools for successfully engaging your families in this survey. The 2023 HCPS Survey Report is available in Board Docs and on the HCPS webpage for the community. As you review the report, you will note that response choices range from 1, meaning completely disagree, to 6, meaning completely agree, and scores from 1 to 3 represent some level of disagreement, and scores from 4 to 6 represent some level of agreement. Data are reported by respondent group and include the percent response for each response choice, item average response, and a combined percent, agree and disagree. Change in average from the 2022 Survey Administration is also included. You'll also see that many survey items were asked across respondent groups, but some were unique to only one group or two groups, or may have only been asked to respondents with a particular experience. Each item in the survey is associated with one of the Division's four cornerstone, and on average, all groups favorably reported on each cornerstone, such that all averages were within the agreement range. To maintain relevance, survey questions are reviewed annually. Therefore, some items from prior years were removed, and others added to gather more specific information about an area of focus. The survey report contains community feedback that division leaders and school administrators will use to guide future planning. The next few slides will highlight some of the key survey findings by sharing items from each group with the most and least favorable responses. Areas of strength were considered as items having a greater than 90% favorable response, and areas of opportunity were considered as items having a greater than 25% unfavorable response. As we discuss the results, you'll notice that some areas are perceived by some stakeholder groups as strengths, and others may perceive those areas as opportunities. Additionally, since we don't have time to review all of the survey items today, it's also important to note that while an item may not have met these thresholds, the item still may have had a high favorable response. This is one way of looking at the results, and while it's useful, it's not the only way. So we are happy to follow up with any additional analysis that may be needed. For the cornerstone of safety and wellness, there were several items related to social and emotional support that arose as a strength or an opportunity. For example, a majority of families feel that students have an adult at school who they can count on for help. Some areas of opportunity include students having time to talk about their feelings, schools facilitating the development of social-emotional skills, and staff showing students that their mental health is a priority. Related to behavior expectations and supports, there were several areas of opportunity noted, including consistent application of behavior expectations, supporting students with conflict resolution, and the prevalence of different types of bullying in school. However, a strength of the survey findings was that staff feel that they communicate with students that bullying will not be tolerated. Lastly, a strength was noted related to our crisis preparedness procedures, such that all respondent groups reported that students have been taught what to do in an emergency or dangerous situation. Moving on to our cornerstone of academic growth, a strategic goal of Destination 2025 is to transform teaching and learning by providing engaging, learner-centered experiences. We see evidence of our progress towards this goal in survey results related to career exploration and readiness, the Henrico learner profile, use of resources to support teaching and learning, and creating a school culture that emphasizes learning. For the area of career exploration and readiness, staff reported that they help students plan for their future by exposing them to college and career opportunities. However, this was noted as an opportunity from families. So targeted efforts to showcase how staff are supporting students with college and career exploration may be needed. Other areas of opportunity included students completing career assessments, and awareness of and participation in career learning experiences for high school students. A driving force of our instructional model is the Henrico learner profile, which describes the knowledge, skills, attributes, and experiences that students need to be life-ready. The aim is to develop these skills in students through deeper learning experiences that promote learner agency. Results from the survey showed that staff reported helping students in developing the six Cs of the Henrico learner profile and providing deeper learning opportunities, particularly encouraging learning in and outside of the classroom and connecting learning to real-life situations. However, students saw this area as an opportunity for continued growth. Strengths were also noted by staff and families related to resources for learning, such that staff report that schools have access to technology to support deeper learning, and the use of assessment data to support student academic growth. Families reported that they received materials about academic programs in languages they can understand. Lastly, survey items related to creating a culture of learning, such as setting high expectations, emphasis on literacy skills, and encouraging school attendance, were rated highly by staff and families. Equity, fairness, diversity, and inclusion and opportunity continue to ground the work of the Division through the implementation of the HCPS Culturally Responsive Education Model. This framework focuses on self-reflection and creating a culture of belonging. The framework includes five components that support this goal, and several were highlighted as strengths in our survey results. First, staff reported that they share a common understanding of equity and diversity. Also, families and staff reported positively on efforts underway supporting content integration and empowering the school culture. For content integration, families and staff report that schools provide materials that teach students about different cultural backgrounds, and students are taught about the accomplishments of people from different backgrounds. For empowering the school culture, staff and families positively reported that staff are comfortable having difficult conversations about current and historical events brought up by students in class, and being comfortable interacting with students and families from different backgrounds. However, a component of school culture was also noted as an opportunity by students, such that they believe adults treat some student groups differently than other groups. Families also felt that schools provide opportunities for reducing prejudice by helping students develop positive attitudes towards people who are different than them. Staff reported that knowledge construction was also a strength, including helping students learn about the qualities, characteristics, and beliefs that make them who they are and how those things affect their thoughts and opinions. Several strengths were also noted in the area of supporting diverse learning needs, including support for EL students, use of evidence-based practices to close gaps, and providing pathways and supports for specialized class and program enrollment. Building authentic trusting connections that encourage collaboration and engagement is pivotal to our success as a school division. In the areas of communication, culture, and student and staff relationships, there were multiple strengths and opportunities. For communication, staff reported that they keep families and students informed about their academic progress, and that they share information with families about academic programs. Families shared that more communication about Destination 2025 may be needed. For culture, staff shared that they believe families feel welcome at school, and families reported that students feel a sense of belonging. However, students ranked this item lower. More information may need to be gathered to understand the difference of these perspectives. Staff reported that they feel respected by other staff members and get along well with their team. However, additional recognition efforts would be appreciated. Another theme was around staff and student relationships. Families and staff reported positively that adults at the school care about students, and staff feel that students are comfortable talking with them if they have a problem. Both students and staff noted student respect for adults as an area of opportunity, which is consistent with prior-year results. Family engagement was also noted as a strength, particularly from staff who feel that they seek family support when working with students, and include parents as partners when making decisions about their child. Families also felt that same way and reported that they feel like an active participant. Peer relationships was identified as an area of opportunity, particularly related to students respecting one another. Analysis of the 2023 survey results by division leaders will be ongoing throughout the summer. Additionally, school-level reports will be available in July to support school leaders in planning for the upcoming school year. That concludes our formal presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, everyone, Ms. Coy, Mr. Thorpe, and Dr. Hinton. Let me see, board members, I know we have questions and comments. Let's start with you, Reverend Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Dr. Hinton, again, I echo the sentiments of my chair in regards to all of you all. Thank you. So can you go to Slide 22 quickly, just two kind of questions around safety and wellness, behavior expectations and support, rules for behavior being applied consistently, issues surrounding behavioral expectations and discipline, and also, all forms of bullying seem to be areas of concern for our staff and our students and family. But I just want to talk briefly about staff. As it relates to the raw data, were there any trends in staff responses from certain schools related to behavioral expectations and support? Or was this pretty consistent throughout the division?
So at this point, all we have are the division-level survey results. We'll be receiving the school results in July, and at that point, we'll be able to look for those trends and patterns.
And so when we take that data plus this data, can you share with us any follow-up regarding maybe focus groups or discussions with staff related to survey items on behavior expectation support?
Sure, and I think Ms. Coy led in very well with the overview of the superintendent advisory committees. I think that's going to be a place where we can really dig into some of this survey data and use that to help, you know, help us determine next steps with the information.
I appreciate that. I think that's very helpful. And then last thing I want to just mention, for each of our areas of opportunity is noted from the surveys on Slides 22 through 25. Are there any next steps outside of the, you know, the superintendent's advisory to gain insight and address the opportunities with students, family, and staff going forward? What are our efforts going to be?
I think it's fair to say, Reverend Cooper, that as we unpack the rest of the results this summer at the school level, we'll be digging in at deeper levels. And then as those results are available by school and we share them with school leaders, then they continue to unpack that information and look at trends within their own buildings, confer with colleagues who may be seeing similar or dissimilar things, try and learn from one another. And Scott spoke to that a bit about how those schools then take that information to set goals for the coming year.
I appreciate that. Thank you. That's it, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great questions, Reverend Cooper. Can I just ask for a point of clarity? This is what a lot of us will work on this summer. Am I right, Mrs. Coy?
Absolutely, at all levels.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, Mrs. Atkins?
Thank you, all of you, for the presentation and your teams, support teams working on the information. I especially appreciate the update on the superintendent advisory committees. I found it to be very insightful, and to align it with the survey results really packs a more powerful story. And so I want to just recognize that piece. It was a pleasure to see. It looks like the response rate is consistent, above 50% for students and staff, which is excellent to have above 50% for a survey in this period of time. We still have work to do to get engagement in taking our surveys from families. Have you discussed some ideas on how to do that?
So, yes, so Mr. Thorpe and I were just talking about that and trying to really capitalize on the relationships that our schools have with our families and our community and becoming, you know, trying to become more innovative in how we reach out to them. I'm also going to be talking with Dr. Manns about how to engage some of her groups in that effort. I know that you all heard a presentation from her Student Equity Advisory Committee, so I know that they have some ideas that we're going to capitalize on.
Wonderful. I was actually, so we are vibing right now. I was thinking about some of the feedback from the EDO groups or the Equity Ambassador teams, and they had some lovely ideas. So I'm glad to hear that that is a priority, to really dive deeper into their considerations. One question I have for you, I didn't see actual numbers here. I see the percentages. However, I think it's the next slide after that that shows the numbers. Do those numbers reflect the average response rate across the board for all the questions? There's one slot, yeah. So if you look here, for example, I think that says 1680, 1229. Is that reflective of the response rate for all of the questions? Because I'm trying to figure out how you calculated your response rate. Because if that's the case, then I was wondering how you received the percentage. So are those numbers reflective of the average response rates?
That's reflective of the response on that item. And so to look at a division-wide, we look at, did a parent respond to any of the survey items and participate in some way? On the first page of the report that you have in Board Docs, there are some specific numbers associated with the percentages.
Fantastic. I'm going to try to get to that. And maybe I won't get it in this moment to calculate out, because there will be variations, because everyone may not answer every question. And so that's kind of what I was hinting at. If everyone isn't answering every question, how did you get a solid percentage per group? Does that question make sense?
Yes, so if they participated in any way, they were included as a participant. But some of the questions on the survey are specifically designed for particular groups. So, for example, our English learner families may receive a small subset about those services. So what you see here is based on the item, which you'll see in the first page of the report is overall.
Perfect, thank you. So I will certainly take a look at that. Other than that, I want to say well done on your presentation. I really liked the approach that you used here. And I hope that it will continue to move forward in sharing the information in this way. And once it's consolidated, once you get through the summer, it would be nice And once it's consolidated, once you get through the summer, it would be nice to see it similar. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Mrs. Shea, would you mind if I ask Mrs. Ogburn if she has questions or comments?
No problem.
Ms. Ogburn, do you have any questions or comments? There she is. Ms. Ogburn, can you hear us?
I can. I can't see you, but I can hear you.
Okay. Do you have any questions or comments for the team?
Oh, there we go. There we go. It's back. Thank you. Are you ready for me?
Yes, yes.
I had to log off for just a second to try and fix, you know, communication problems. But anyway, I just, I'll be real quick. I just wanted to, especially on the advisory committees, express my appreciation for those folks who serve on those committees, because that's over and above what their duty, their regular duties are. So, you know, that's very valuable for us to have our stakeholders and our employees participate. And that also, I appreciate that the staff takes the opportunity to look at this data, look at the survey results, and then use it to help improve the supports offered to our students. It shows that the work is vital and put to good use. But I did have a question, Dr. Hinton, about the peer relationships. It was one of the last slides that you had. It was under the relationship one. The peer relationships as an opportunity. Any ideas there so far on how we're going to use that? That's the kids telling us that, you know, that they need help with treating each other with respect, and that, I think, goes back to what Reverend Cooper was talking about, all that behavior piece. It all goes together. Just curious how we're going to use that feedback to focus on the future.
I'm not sure I understand.
Thank you for the question, Ms. Ogburn. I think two initial thoughts to share, and happy to continue the conversation as our teams dig into these and come up with additional ideas. But one, just as we think about entering into a new school year collectively, this priority and a sense of belonging and how important that is for all of our students and staff, and digging into that topic with them and supporting our school leaders as they support our students in that work. But then, secondly, just reiterating that our school teams will be looking at that in the context of the data and the trends in their own buildings, and are things getting better or are they getting worse? What does that mean about things they've tried? And I know that they'll be looking at this data as soon as we get those school reports to them with that mindset.
Well, and it's just as a quick follow-up. One of the things that, I was at Holman Middle School recently, and one of the things that the guidance counselor team and I were discussing, that it would be great if there were more opportunities for the schools to share what's working and what's not working. And so, we talked about some of the programs, for example, that are at Holman that are working. And so, I would just encourage that sharing of information, because, you know, at each academic level, it helps to know and not have to reinvent the wheel all the time. But anyway, I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you, Ms. Ogburn. Mrs. Shea.
Thank you so much. So many things I appreciate about this presentation. First of all, really focusing on some of these superintendent advisory committees, because our superintendent and her leadership team, you all do, you all are so genuine about wanting to hear from our stakeholders. And on this side, I know that that feedback is truly taken to heart. It's truly discussed amongst yourselves, amongst us, as we move forward making decisions. All stakeholders have a seat at the table, an authentic, genuine seat at the table, and this is part of it. This doesn't even include the superintendent or her leadership team meeting with HEA regularly and other groups. It is something that this leadership team is so passionate about, and so, I really appreciate you highlighting for the public some of those things that happen and some of those avenues that this happens through. The reinvention of TAC in the last couple of years, I've talked to staff who have been on it, has been profound. It is a long way from when it used to be a building representative submitted a bunch of questions and a PDF came back with the answers. It really is a genuine conversation and problem solving, and I wish everyone could kind of see what happens at those meetings, because it really is a passion of this leadership, and I think it is so important and critical to the work that all of us do moving forward, making sure all of our stakeholders have a voice. And so, thank you for highlighting that in this presentation. I really appreciated looking at the outcomes of those advisory groups, as well as last year's survey, and having some specific impact and outcomes of things that have changed to say, hey, we don't just talk about it. We don't just take it to heart. Here are some ways that it has substantially changed how we do things, and I think that's so important for not only our public to hear about us as a board, to see those real tangible outcomes. So, thank you for not only highlighting that, but again, for y'all's passion in that. It really makes a difference. And then, I'll just close saying, I really look forward to seeing after July, the school-level results for the survey, because we have a very diverse school community when we look at different, within schools, but also different parts of the county, also at different levels. And so, while the aggregate can tell us kind of how we're doing as a division very broadly, I think really drilling down and seeing school to school, where are things similar? Where are things different? I think that really tells the story. So, thank you, Dr. Hinton, for bringing kind of our macro level, and I look forward to that deeper dive that we can kind of take within our districts.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. So, maybe, Ms. Coy, maybe any of you could answer this. So, we've heard that we're going to be, leadership teams this summer are going to be diving deep into the data. When will the data be shared back to school families? Because I know, isn't it typical, right? I mean, as a parent myself in Henrico schools, I know that we've received in some fashion, maybe it's new initiatives we're going to try in response to feedback. Maybe it won't look exactly like this, but do you have any comments or thoughts on that, Dr. Hinton?
So, Mr. Thorpe may be able to expand upon this, but we encourage our schools, as they're sitting down, to think about their goals for next year and analyzing this data, using that to present that, you know, their next steps as a school to their school community through the use of this data to say, you know, we as a school recognize this trend and pattern, and now this is going to be our focus for this coming school year. Do you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, absolutely. I'll expand on that through an elementary lens, and so, it's a common practice in all of our elementary schools. We have back-to-school night, third week in September. Our schools are so fired up about it, and our communities are as well. It's very customary for us at our elementary schools on that night to say, here are some of our data highlights from the past year, and also, here are some of our results from our climate survey, and here's what we're doing about it, and here's how you're going to see this throughout the year, and here are updates that you're going to get through our Sunday messages or monthly newsletters, et cetera.
Now, I appreciate that. You know, in so many other places, not Henrico schools, I think people take the time to share feedback, and it's like it falls on deaf ears, but not here, right? Like, each school community will be responsive as well as if it's a division-wide opportunity for us. So, thank you for that. Then, with our rollback, do we anticipate changing the time since we'll be fully rolled back this year? It's March, April. Do we anticipate any change in timing of that? Just knowing March is a really busy time of year, and I know how many reminders I got from, as a mom, from my school, just remind, it was almost like, are people taking the time to open the reminder and fill it out? I mean, I know our response rate isn't as high as we'd like it to be, but it seemed to hold stable from last year.
Yes, it did, and I think your point is valid. You know, we will have to adjust the survey administration, particularly so we can have the results in a timely manner for schools to use over the summer. So, we will be adjusting that for next year.
Fantastic. I think our response rate may even increase. Did you find, or did you learn anything new about the different communication mechanisms that we use this time to get more responses from different schools? Were the school, was the school response rate higher, or you haven't dug in as deep yet?
Yeah, we haven't dug into that level yet. I do know that we will have a new communication system, this platform this year, which may give us some additional capabilities for communicating that in a very easy way.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, really, this and the presentation style. I agree with my colleagues, seeing it in this format, and it doesn't truly cover really all the student feedback, student, staff, family, community feedback that we receive. I really like seeing it all together, and it doesn't even, like Mrs. Shea said, it doesn't even include every single group that we hear from. And I guess I would just like to see not so many, and our opportunities, I can't wait till they move to that left side to a strength, because there are lots of opportunities there with students beside them, and that's why we do what we do. So, I'm looking forward to seeing what things are brought forward for change, right? So that not so many student groups will be on the right-hand side of the page. But thank you, really, for all the work. Looking forward to diving into my own school data this summer with you guys. Thank you very much, Madam Superintendent.
All right. Thank you all again for the presentation, and as has been stated, we look forward to continuing to share updates on stakeholder feedback, as well as progress and next steps.